Namah Vishnu Padaya Krishna Pristaya Namaste Sarasmiti Deva Gauravani Prachalin Shri Krishna Chetanana Rabunitanana Shri Ateta Kadada Shiva Sadhigodpatabinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare Hare Kaya Kaya Dhanam Kaya Dhanam Kaya Dhanam Kaya Dhanam Kaya Dhanam Kaya Dhanam Kaya Gaya Nita Kaya Nita Kaya Nita Kaya Kaya Nita Kaya Nita Kaya Kaya Kabhi Kaya Kabhi Kaya Kabhi Kaya 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 Kabhi Kaya 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 Dhanam 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 Kaya Gaya 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 Thank God Pranamande Hare Hare Gaya Shiva Gaya
Hare Krishna and pranams dear devotees so thank you for joining our evening session on Odisha Amrit so we heartily welcome his own is Bhakti Ancho Priti Vardhan Maraj by loudly chanting Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Maharaj
How are you doing how is the weather in Delhi?
It's better now Maharaj
It warmed up?
Little bit so during the day it is little better, little pleasant.
Okay, here also I mean two days ago it was very cold here but now it's warming up. How is it with fog in Delhi?
Prabhuji you're in mute.
Oh sorry yes light not too much fog Maharaj. There isn't
Okay.
No fog Maharaj.
Okay good. We were supposed to have Amit Shah coming here Maharaj.
Yes Maharaj we saw the flex as all the posters they had put up to welcome him.
Yeah but he didn't make it.
So they had that small blast in Delhi so they didn't allow him to go.
That embassy blast?
That embassy blast yes. Didn't allow him to go.
Yeah well what to do?
Krishna with plans.
Yes Maharaj.
Okay so we finished Atiyahara but we didn't talk about Niyamagraha right? Did we?
No Maharaj.
Okay we will just continue then. So then continue reading from the Bodhisambrita. Accepting some of the scripture rules and regulations for immediate benefit is ultimate advocate is called Niyamagraha. And neglecting the rules and regulations of the shastras which are meant for spiritual development is called Niyamaagraha. The word Agra means eagerness to accept and Agra means failure to accept. By the addition of either of these two words to the word Niyama, rules and regulations, the word Niyamagraha is formed. Thus, Niyamagraha is a twofold meaning that is understood according to the particular combination of words. That's the beauty of the Sanskrit that you can have one word but it has exactly the two meanings which you want it to have. So accepting something which is not well the eagerness to accept but at same time like a failure to accept. So rules and regulations and it is great yeah. So that's yeah that's the Sanskrit language. Just how precise it can be. Now other languages don't have the facility. Those interested in Krishna consciousness should not be eager to accept rules and regulations for economic advancement yet they should very faithfully accept spiritual scripture rules and regulations for the advancement of Krishna consciousness. They should strictly follow the regulatory principles by avoiding illicit sex, meat eating, gambling and intoxication. So yeah Niyamaagraha or Niyamagraha then it's about and what we follow. We have to know that we follow the right thing. And we have to be careful also when we followed it then we followed it for the particular purpose. And when the purpose is fulfilled then we may not need to follow that particular no what do you say definition no particular rule or regulation. Like an example we can see the Vedas they talk about now different kandas right so karma kanda or jhana kanda or upasana kanda. Now each of them they have different set of rules to follow. And now each of them are also on the different level of realization of the person. So now karma kandis they will follow certain rules which are very strictly now applicable to them. But the jhanis now who understands that the karma is not as important they will follow different set of rules. Now that doesn't mean then the jhanis do something wrong. They are following now their set depending on their level of consciousness they followed it and and they keep advancing. The karma kandis they follow the now their now rules and regulations for them to advance from the karma kanda. So if we understand what needs to be done what needs to be followed we can if we can keep advancing. So the karma kandi now can eventually come to the platform jhana yoga and now after now all that then he can come to the platform of bhakti. So the advancement is there it's possible but yes it's slow. Now that was also the hope now discussion between Narada and Vyasa there. The Vedas are there now everything is there everything is explained but people are not taking it now as seriously. So then Vyasa wants to know what to do. And Narada Moon said Bhagavatam that's the solution. But those who are not interested in bhakti they will not read Bhagavatam. They want to know the rules and regulations and they want to follow that and now as long as they follow the rules and regulations to advance from the present platform then it's fine it's good. But if they keep being attached to follow the rules then they will not be able to advance from the platform they are on. So that's why now we can say the process now is very slow because the karma kandis they are karma kandis now for the rest of their life. They are stuck in the process. They don't see any consideration now how they can transcend it they know now okay I'll do this I'll go to heaven and plants if I'm biased I'll go to hell if I'm sinful and hopefully will take another birth as a brahmana and then again continue. So they are now we are going to follow these rules this is this is our life. But that's not the proper understanding. So even the person now following the rules and regulations when he understands the higher principles then he should give up the attachment to the rules. It's not that he should now renounce all the rules and regulations. No, no it's not like that. He still follows but he may follow now different sets depending on Guru Sarushastra. What is prescribed he's not making it up. So therefore that should be always properly considered and for devotees then why why desire an abhakti it's about rules and regulations. The four of the principles now and then how we are trying to advance by chanting Japa and by developing relationships among the devotees. Association taking giving. So if we do that we progress now when the devotee comes to the platform of Ragannuga Bhakti then some of the rules and regulations which are now applicable for the Vaidya Saranabhakti then may become an obstacle. So the devotee now may renounce some of these rules and regulations. But it's not because he decides so he just simply forgets. Like sometimes now a devotee who is now absorbed in in thought of Krishna he may come to the temple right and he may forget to pay obeisances. Because he's so absorbed so now it's his fault. Should he be now punished for that? No it's it's he is only absorbed our coming to the temple and paying obeisances is to let the deity know that we are surrendering. And therefore our mind should be okay now I've surrendered so now I should behave like a devotee. So now just simply we put ourselves into the subservient position. But the devotee now who is already now meditating on the Lord he is in the position. But materialists now will not understand like the the example of of Lord Shiva and we have we have our Prajapati Daksha right? So Daksha taught that now Lord Shiva as being in one way now junior to him then he should pay respect to him by standing up when he's coming into the assembly but Lord Shiva he would probably do it but he was so absorbed on the thought of the Lord he just didn't notice him. And Daksha took it as a sign you are not following the rules and regulations. And he got all upset and then the whole the whole scene now came there. So but it wasn't his fault it wasn't Lord Shiva's fault. He was just absorbed so therefore now these rules and regulations if they are there to help us they are benefited they are benefiting us and they are welcome and we should follow them. But we should never think of that we can renounce them now just because we feel like. The devotees who come to the high platform of consciousness they don't give up the rules whimsically. We can see for example the great devotees you can you can tell not take any the Goswamis they lived according to the rules and regulations not that because they had to but they did so to teach us that we should. So therefore the great devotees now they may decide now to follow the rules for as an example and we see Krishna and Balaram himself they follow the rules and regulations they go to Gurukul. They don't have to go to Gurukul. They are the teacher of the whole world of the whole universe they know everything so what new they can learn but they go to Gurukul why to show a good example. Then the rules now and the child who has to be brahmachari and as a brahmachari now he serves guru in Gurukul and that's how he gets good qualities good character knowledge and that's how he's being educated so then they gave a good example. So we have to know what it is that we have to follow and what not to follow. And we have to be very careful that you are not following our minds to tell us what to follow and not to follow we have to follow the the rules as described by Guru Sarushastra. One should also avoid association with mayavaidis who simply bless from Vaishnavas devotees, bhaktikamis who are interested in material happiness and mukthikamis who desire liberation by merging in the existence of the former's absolute Brahman and siddikamis who desire the perfection of mystic yoga practice are classified as Atiyaharis. To associate with such persons is not at all desirable. Desires to expand the mind by perfecting mystic yoga, merging in the existence of Brahman or attaining whimsical material prosperity are all included within the category of greed, laulya. All attempts to acquire such material benefits or so-called spiritual advancement are impediments on the path of Krishna consciousness. So yeah so all these we have to be very careful now how we accept we have to be very careful now to properly know how to follow Guru Sarushastra to accept the conclusions of Guru Sarushastra and that happens not through the association of devotees. Okay modern warfare waged between capitalism and communists is due to their avoiding the advice of Shira Rupa Goswami regarding Atiyahara. Modern capitalists accumulate more wealth than necessary and the communist envious of their prosperity want to nationalize all wealth and property. Unfortunately, the communists do not know how to solve the problem of wealth and its distribution. Consequently, when the wealth of the capitalists falls into the hands of the communists, no solution results. Opposed to these two philosophies, the Krishna conscious ideology states that all wealth belongs to Krishna. Thus, unless all wealth comes under the administration of Krishna, there can be no solution to economic problem of mankind. Nothing can be solved by placing wealth in the hands of the communists or the capitalists. If a hundred dollar bill is lying on the street, someone may pick it up and put it in his pocket. Such a man is not honest. Another man may see the money and decide to let it remain there taking that thinking that he should not touch another's property. Although the second man does not steal the money for his own purposes, he is unaware of its proper use. The third man who sees the hundred dollar bill may pick it up, find the man who lost lost it and deliver it to him. This man does not steal the money to spend for himself nor does he neglect neglected and let it lie in the street. By taking it and delivering it to the man who has lost it, this man is both honest and wise. Simply transferring wealth from capitalist to communist cannot solve the problem of modern politics. For it has been demonstrated that when a communist get money, he uses for his own sin gratification. The wealth of the world actually belongs to Krishna and every living entity, man and animal, has the bright right right birthright to use God's property for his maintenance. When one takes more than his maintenance requires, be he a capitalist or communist, he's a thief. And as such, he is liable to be punished by the law of nature. So this is very educational can say from that we can learn a lot. We know how Rupa Goswami now tells us how how we should deal with the money how we should deal with money our income. So that's a way how we can do and not make money but at the same time not being entangled by the results. Because the results are being offered to the Lord. So now if now all this considered and then we apply the proper way then we can remain being Krishna conscious. Otherwise now we are talking Atiyahara Otherwise, now we are talking atiahara, we are talking near magraha. All these affect our consciousness. And then it drops it from the platform of Krishna consciousness to mundane bodily consciousness. You see, for example, Noshita Praapath. He was at the time, one of the richest people in the world. But he wasn't greedy. He never considered any of that money as his own. It was all for Krishna. So Krishna can provide. Whatever we need, Krishna can provide. Just having faith and things work. But if we try to do something differently, then problem is that we get attached to it and things don't work. So if we are supposed to have something, then we can have. If we are not supposed to have and we get more than we are supposed to, more than the quota, we cannot retain it anywhere, anyway. We lose it. And now we may get all upset, but that's just the reality. That's the isha vasya principle. That much is allotted to us, that much we use. Anything else? It's just, no, not our quota. So rather, we can focus on Krishna consciousness and do with a small endeavor, minimal endeavor, to maintain what we need to to keep the body and soul together and to maintain the family. And focus on Krishna consciousness, rather than over endeavor, work sixteen hours and not try to do something, get some better situation. But you will not be able to manage it and maintain it anyway if it doesn't belong to you. Like Shira Praapath's father, he had a cloth shop and he was selling cloth for like an hour, maybe two hours a day in the shop. And he got enough money to maintain the family. So he could have thought, well, if I sit in the shop for four hours or five hours or six hours, I get more money. If I get more money, then we can have better situation. But because he was Krishna conscious, he knew that this is not a fact. If he's supposed to get certain amount of money, he will get the money in one hour or two hours or eight hours. And if he over endeavors, then he may get some money more, but he will not be able to retain it or to use it. So in fact, now over endeavoring to get more money, we get attached to it. And after that, losing it, it's even worse than not having it at all. But it all depends on our faith, the shraddha. So having faith in Krishna, then we can we can understand, we can follow. So we have to work on to understand that the facility which are being given to us are not for our own purposes, not for our own sin gratification, but we should use in Krishna consciousness. Okay, are there some questions?
Hare Krishna.
Near magraha or atiahara.
Some questions on. No Maharaj, no questions.
Yes. Thank you so much Maharaj for the wonderful session. I had one question. Like you said that we have to be very careful in following the Guru Sadhusastra and the way to do that, or to follow the conclusions of the Guru Sadhusastra. And the way to do that is to by the association of devotees. So can you please elaborate a bit more on that? So how can we do that with the help of association of devotees? How can we always do Guru Sadhusastra?
Ideally, we have a guide. So guru is there now, who can explain the Shastra to us. So the conclusions of the Shastra are being explained, now we follow. But now, how do we follow in our situation? Now, he may explain the perfection of it. Like, for example, Bhagavatam. See Bhagavatam, what is it about? Bhagavatam is about the lives of devotees. How they live their lives and how they become Krishna conscious. So reading Bhagavatam can give us such a great inspiration to follow some of the devotees. Oh, I would like to be a Druva Maharaj. Or I would like to be like Pradhar Maharaj. Or I'm so sinful like Ajamil. Okay, what can I do to end up like Ajamil, at least? Now, there are so many, so many examples, what happens if you are pious, if you are sinful, but anybody can take up Krishna consciousness. So reading Bhagavatam, you're associating with the devotees. And as Krishna explains, Bhagavat, now the book Bhagavat, right? It's there, but there is also the person Bhagavat. So Bhagavatam is not limited to twelve kantos. Bhagavatam is constantly expanding. So those are the devotees, not their lives, how they are applying. And hearing about some devotees' lives, how they became devotee. Other devotees may get inspiration, know what to follow. Oh, yeah, he's, he's, no, I really like the way how he dealt with his life. I would like to do the same what he did. So that's the association we are talking about. So that's sadhu. So Shastra is there, but sometimes the Shastra, it's really inaccessible because we don't understand. Guru explains. But only the sadhu shows you actually the practical application of it. Because then you have that some, no, that unlimited devotees or the devotees you are associating with and who guide you, telling you, helping you with your day-to-day situations. Guru, he may not be able to be always there for you for any problem, every problem. But the sadhu is there now to do that. So that's why the combination guru, sadhu and the shastra. Yes?
Yes Maharaj, thank you so much. Hare Krishna. Thank you Maharaj.
Any?
Hare Krishna Maharaj, Damirpana. Maharaj, I have one question related to atiahar for the long time. So that is Maharaj, we have material facilities. And because our parents had worked a lot, and so we are enjoying his work. So some people say, businessmen say, that we should work for our children also. Because if we will work, then our children, we have got it because of our parents, and we should give it to our children also. So I had this thing in my mind before coming to this con, but it has been changed. But still, can you clear it further?
Yes. See, as a grihasta, then you are responsible for taking care of your children and your family. Now, your wife, children. So that's true. Now, so you work to maintain them, to protect them, to make them happy, whatever it's needed for, it's your responsibility. But now overall, your responsibility is for you to maintain Krishna consciousness and to see that also they become Krishna conscious. So now, that duty of yours is there until the children become adults. After they are adults and they are capable of taking care of their mother, then you have two choices. You either take up vana prasta, now which together with your wife, then you give the space to the children. Now, okay, now you are big guys. Okay, take up, take my business, do that. Or now do something else, whatever you need to do. I gave you the training, whatever I could have. I send you to the schools. So then you get the training with what the teachers can give you. Now you have your intelligence, you have your ego, you have your mind. So whatever values you learn, you have to apply in your life and you have to maintain yourself. You as a parent, you are not obliged to take care of your adult child. Now, so you have to give him enough facility so he can take care of himself. And then, now that's all in your duty as a grihasta. Now, and you should start focusing on spiritual life only. So if it's vana prasta, then with your wife, then you go and you are not part of the social scene anymore. So you can live, you move to Vrindavan and then just have a spiritual sarana. Now, or move to Govardhan, or whatever you want to do, whatever you feel that you can start practicing spiritual life very seriously. Or now, if you decide that you would like to use the knowledge and your experience, what you have gathered in preaching, take sanyas. And now start, you go for preaching. And then your wife, then she can be taken care of by the children. So then you don't have problem, you are not, you don't have the obligation. And you can go on and use that opportunity for the preaching. It doesn't mean that you have to develop some like a bad feelings. Not that the feelings among the family members still can be nice, but you understand your priorities. So with the same enthusiasm, which you are going into the grihasta ashram, you should use the same enthusiasm to leave the grihasta ashram. And then your life will be successful. So now, that's basically now what, if you understand this, then most of your problems will be solved. So now you don't have to worry much. You are just maintaining whatever you need to do. And because you are busy, then you do at least something, following chenning sixteen rounds a day and maybe little reading. Maybe you don't have time for anything else. All right. But plan, the time comes, your children are adults. Give them space, give them the responsibility, let them do what they need to do. And then you move on. Start practicing spiritual life seriously. Is it vana prasta or a sanyasi? Yes?
Yes, thank you Maharaj. Thank you very much.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Any more questions, devotees?
Maybe it's too heavy?
Yes Maharaj, it's too heavy to digest.
But actually, it should not be heavy. It may not sound like that. But renouncing the attachments to the material world, it's not going to bring a pain. If you do it properly, it will bring a pleasure. It's like you go to hospital for operation. The operation is not meant to give you suffering. The operation is meant to remove the suffering. But for the suffering to be removed, then yes, some more pain will come first. First to cut you open, to do the operation, and that's painful. But the doctor is not doing it for the pleasure. Oh, now I'll make some more patients suffer. No, he's not doing it for that. He is doing it because he knows this is the way how you can help. So we have to understand that we are also in the position, that we have to accept it. We have to see. Shastra says like this. So we have to follow that to be able to take full advantage of the human form of life. Now, if we try to postpone it and then is that, then stay as a grihasta for till one dies, then the possibility of going back to God are going to be less. And if we actually practice seriously Krishna consciousness now on the vana prasta or sanyas level, then we are helping our family the most. Because they being connected to us, and if we are serious in devotion activities, then they will benefit. Now, even though they may not practice anything, but still they will benefit from that. Now, the devotee is there, and therefore they will also be liberated. So that's the best help anyway we can do to them. And now, yes, so we should not feel kind of like, oh, it's too heavy, I cannot do this. Anybody can. But think about it, not what's happening right now, that now is the time for agony, but rather what's going to be after, when we will be able to actually practice pure Krishna consciousness. So we have to learn how to invest to take profits.
Thank you Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Thank you so very much Maharaj. Maharaj, we were just on another topic. We were trying to make a yatra to Mayapur, but we found Maharaj, all the rooms are booked in Mayapur in March.
Are they?
Yes Maharaj.
For the festival or now?
After that also, in April also, they are saying complete Aprilism.
Are they? They are expecting that not many international devotees will come for the festival this year. So it's going to be more like just Indian.
Yes Maharaj. So we are
maybe they haven't opened up to the full capacity or I'm not sure.
I am not sure. I don't know. I think this situation will be changing, depending on, in the world nowadays, the vaccinations, so they're expecting that now it will disappear immediately. Or who knows what?
Yes.
It's in the hands of Krishna anyway. Now, well then, how it's going to be happening? They may have a vaccination, but then they will, now the virus mutates and all the vaccination may be used for that. So when they think they are in control and they can just do whatever they want, then the modes of nature will teach them that, no, you cannot. Until they surrender. It's like when in Mahabharata, who was it? Was it Karna or who released the Narana Astra for the Pandavas? And when Krishna saw it, he said, oh, look, you cannot fight this Astra. The only way how you can, how you can subdue this Astra, you have to surrender. So you have to just, so everybody did except Bima. Wow, I can do anything I want. I can fight. Now, so as you fight, then the Astra becomes stronger. So and then Bima was being overpowered by the Astra. So Krishna, hey! So and then Bima was being overpowered by the Astra. So Krishna, hey, just surrender. And Bima understood, surrendered, and everything was peaceful. So now we have to also learn how to surrender when, when there's a need. Trying, now, we can do whatever we want, now, people can have sex, now, and after abortions and like that. This is so, so wrong. And then for that, there is a reaction. And then the reactions, they may come anyway, as a virus. So the real solution is only Krishna consciousness. Everything else is just a temporary thing which may work. But the modes of nature will always teach us that we are wrong. And whenever we feel it, now we have it, now we control the wind, now we control the sun, we control everything. And everything just goes, now, it disappears. So the, the futile attempt of the humans not to take control, it's, it's just going to moon, going to Mars, now, what are they going to do there? Something like that. Just let's now pray to Krishna and let's make our life successful. That's all. What else do we need?
Yes Maharaj. Thank you so very much Maharaj. Thank you so very much Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you so much. Very lovely chant, Hare Krishna Maharaj. Thank and pray for Maharaj. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna, Krishna. Hare Ram, Hare Ram.
Hareva.
Hare Krishna. Thank you.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Thank you so much.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Thank you devotees. So we hope to meet you again on Friday, Saturday, Saturday now.